Bottles, and then board discussion, and, and board motions, and board action. So I am, uh, would like to introduce, uh, Jacina Hasten. She is our attorney. And, um, I've asked her to kind of out, um, lay out what we're gonna be focusing on today.
Okay, so the specific thing that this board is going to address is, did Pinellas County comply with Pinellas County Code 22 dash 163 and 3109 dash 7.3 point 2 point 1 of the Coastal Construction Code when issuing the demolition permit CB 19 dash 02578. That is the specific limited scope of what this board is going to consider here today.
All right, thank you. So as is, um, customary at our licensing board, we say the Pledge of Allegiance. So we are gonna stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. You'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now I'm going to, uh, turn it over to Gay Lancaster for roll call.
All right, Mr. Hatton?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
McCarthy, sorry.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Tyer?
Here.
Mr. Esposito?
Here.
We have all members present and a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, uh, we will proceed now, um, with the county's presentation.
Good afternoon, my name is Blake Line. I'm the Director of Building and Development Review Services for Pinellas County. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. Um, I'll try to be fairly on point, but I'd like to start before I get into the depth of the subject matter to give you a little bit of orientation and context. Um, apologize for those in the audience that were here this morning, this is gonna seem a little redundant, but I wanted to make sure if anybody's tuning in this afternoon that didn't have an opportunity to participate in this morning's hearing, and certainly for the board's consideration. So the first, um, is a slide that simply just identifies where this subject property is in relation to Pinellas County. As you can see there, it's indicated by the red star. It's adjacent to Boca Seega Bay in the unincorporated areas of, uh, Seminole. As we zoom in a little closer, the red outline identifies the extent of the subject property. What I was gonna try to elaborate for you here a little bit is you'll see the, the property in and of itself is about 150 acres. About 100 acres of that is land. There is some submerged land, the property lines do extend out into the water. Um, in this particular graphic, you'll see in the upper right-hand corner of that subject property, there's a blue rec, or excuse me, a purple rectangle that identifies kind of the zoom extent for the next slide. So as you zoom in, you'll see the building that's, uh, being discussed this afternoon, the hearing, is this building that's here indicated by the cursor. Uh, again, that's in the northeast portion of the property, and is being subject, uh, for consideration of demolition. This is a recent, although not current, picture of, um, the building in question, uh, from the vantage point of the parking lot, which is adjacent to 66th Street. Uh, actually, let me back up a little bit, because I wanted to also mention, there is, and I think you'll see a little bit later, the, the question for the minimum building criteria is the screen room on the left, you'll see there, and then there's some damage, um, to the entryway and some of the windows, uh, that's in the front portion there. When we look back to the board's purview, uh, and what's in front of you today, you're specifically identified, and this is, uh, the attorney references, section, uh, 22 of the Pinellas County Code, and it identifies your purview, and it see, you see there in the first paragraph that talks about the demolition, so it is properly before you, and that's particularly as it pertains to the Florida Building Code. Uh, and that will become more important as we get into the subsequent discussion, as well as the, um, National Fire Protection Code as well. This image that you're seeing now, the areas that are indicated in the red hashed areas are really the structural components of, uh, the demolition. The building in itself, as you saw in the earlier photograph, appears to be a one-story building from the street vantage point, um, but what you don't adequately see in that description is that there is a subterranean portion of that building. The, on the left and the right of the main building are kind of wing walls that come out, and so essentially what it is, is there's a, a basement underneath, it's where the golf carts used to drive through, be subject to the, um, any operational maintenance issues, and then they come out the other side. Um, so the scope of the demolition includes the entirety of the building, including the subterranean portions, or semi-subterranean portions of that. When the county took its action, uh, and reviewed it, we really reviewed three components of it, the first of which you see here is a site plan, that's us looking at where the extent of the work is going, um, various issues like grading of the site that come into play. Um, they also consider the habitat portion, that's making sure we deal with, um, tree protection, erosion control, uh, special status species. Neither of those items A or B are in front of you this afternoon. What we're asking you to focus on in particular is the county's issuance of the building permit, uh, and specifically the demolition component of that. There was an element that the applicant, and they can speak to this a little bit later in their presentation time, um, about the asbestos abatement, uh, and filing with the county's air quality division, as well as the state. Um, and I should also elaborate that part of our review, they have consideration, is they can take the building down and leave, uh, the hole in place, they can take the building down and backfill it with soil and materials, um, and that can be stuff that's trucked in from offsite, or they can simply, uh, backfill and regrade the property, which is what they've, um, indicated that they intend to do. The appellants have, in their, in their filing of appeal, identified two specific justifications for their grounds of appeal. Um, as you see here, 22163, which is enforcement and compliance with other ordinance, in particular, that section of the, um, Pinellas County Code refers to building maintenance issues. It's the cite, uh, citation that we used when we identified the code enforcement violation, where they weren't meeting the minimum criteria for maintaining a building. Um, in our opinion, it is not applicable to the demolition of the building, because it's a property maintenance issue, or a building maintenance related issue, and then we'll get into the subsequent one a little bit later. So, um, this is the specific language that you see, where it says, "No license or permit or other certification of compliance with this article shall constitute a defense against any violation or other ordinance the county applicable to structures or premises." Um, and so, again, this specific is regard to property maintenance, not the actual demolition, so. Um, the second item that's brought in front of me, yeah?
Blake, could you speak to the purpose of that particular Pinellas County Code and how it relates?
Sure. Um, in typical operations, you have an existing building, we, um, our code enforcement division, both, um, from a code enforcement and from a building enforcement, wanna make sure that there are property standards that are adhered to. And so those property standards can be anything from, uh, on the code enforcement side, trash and debris on a property, uh, the vegetation on a property, whether there's an inoperable vehicle on the property, and it includes building maintenance. And for residential purposes, that's making sure that there are minimum housing standards, so that the, uh, building is kept in good repair. And from a commercial standpoint, it's similar, although it's not from a residential or living quarters perspective, it's, is the building being properly maintained? And so when the county cited, uh, the property owner, that they weren't properly maintaining that building, they have the option to pursue either, um, correcting those violations. So in this case, we cited them for the screen room not having the appropriate screens and being damaged, and so they could repair that. Um, there were windows that were broken out on the building, they could also repair those. In this instance, the property owner does not have an interest in maintaining that building, and so one of the other options that is available to them, as a private property and as a private property owner, is to bring that building down. And so in doing that, they would seek the demolition permit that's, uh, being appealed before you today. The second point of reference that was brought up in this appeal refers to section 3109, uh, 3.3, and it talks about, um, the Coastal Construction Code. And in particular, what I'd like to point out, and you'll see in the language that's there, it references anything, um, that was 1978 and, and moving forward, and so this particular building was built in 1973, so that section of the code isn't applicable, um, for those particular reasons. And here's a screenshot of, um, the property appraiser's website that talks about your build, and I've highlighted that, um, in the red circle for you as well. The other thing that comes into play when you talk about the, um, building zones, is that it looks at, um, the coastal construction control line, and if you're familiar with the coastal construction control line, it runs essentially down Gulf Boulevard on the barrier islands, and there's some language in there that talks about, um, that it's applicable to the extent of those barrier islands, um, it may extend 5,000 feet landward, again, from that coastal construction control line. This property in and of itself, and this is an example, and the illustration, that red with the, uh, triangles on there is the existing coastal construction control line, and the larger star is the location of the subject building. This is over 8,000 feet away, so that provision of the code is not applied and applicable in this scenario, and wasn't part of the county's consideration, uh, because it doesn't apply, um, to, to this location. Um, and then they get back into, again, the failure to properly perform inspections and during inspections, and again, those inspections occur, and one of the things that you're likely familiar with is really the extent of those inspections are, once the building has come down, then our building, uh, staff will go out and verify that they've properly capped the sewer to that, and that's the type of inspection that's associated with a demolition permit. Uh, otherwise, this would be applied to as the building's being constructed. And to further that point, again, it's not within the coastal construction control area, so even still, it doesn't apply. So our recommendation and request of you this afternoon is to, and I wanna be specific about this, it's to deny the appeal, and in doing so, you would be upholding the county's issuance of the building permit as referenced here. So it'd be denial of the appeal, is what we're requesting. So with that, I'll conclude my, uh, comments, and happy to answer any questions you have now or in the future.
Any questions?
I should also mention, if I might, I have, um, John Sagretti with me here, who's our chief building official, or, I'm just gonna be the chief building inspector, and David Sadowski is our county attorney.
David Sadowski, Assistant County Attorney. Again, uh, the county's position is that they've appealed it under two codes. One is the Coastal Construction Code, and the other one is the, uh, Commercial and, um, Business and Industrial Minimum Standards Code. We believe neither of these codes apply to the, to the issuance of the, um, building permit under the demolition permit. And the, and because neither, when you issue a demolition, uh, building permit, we've issued it under the Florida Building Code, and they haven't appealed any provision of the Florida Building Code, they've appealed it under these two particular, um, codes, neither wa, neither, neither of them apply to this situation. As you heard, the Coastal Construction Code doesn't apply because of the age of the building, the, the, the distance from the coastal construction line, and the fact that they're, they were alleging, uh, the inspections hadn't been done since the, but the inspections wouldn't have been done until later on. And the second thing was the, the, uh, Commercial, Industrial, um, Minimum Standards Code, again, that was, that's not applicable, because that's applicable to, that code is applicable to when you have a building, to maintain it at a certain standard. Once you're tearing it down, that code doesn't apply. So I just wanted to be clear, that we believe that this board basically does not have jurisdiction to hear this, uh, under these two provisions, because these two codes don't apply. So, if there's any questions, I can answer them.
All right, thank you. Is that the finality of the presentation from the county?
I have actually, one thing I failed to, um, indicate, the county has received an application for a land use amendment, zoning amendment, development agreement, and brownfield designation. All of those components of the application are separate and apart from the action that's in front of you this afternoon, um, and will be considered under their own merits by the appropriate boards and committees and commissions at a later time.
All right, thank you. Um, as we move forward, I'll ask, um, Colleen and Stephen Dannemiller to come up as the appellant. And as you, as you had last time, 20 minutes?
Okay.
All right.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Dannemiller. Uh, we're here to talk about our appeal for the demo permit. Uh, I've got a background in hazardous waste management, I've managed a hazardous waste for a large Coast Guard Air Station, had a contractor's license for earthwork and paving with hazardous substance removal, and I was a stormwater practitioner. This is all in California, granted, not Florida, but I still have some experience in the field. Um, basically here, the appeal, they wanna take the dirt, after they demoed the clubhouse, and put that dirt in the hole. To me, in my opinion, I know we talk about opinions and assumptions here, but that dirt is contaminated, and I'll try and get to that point in a minute here, why. And like I said, the county made some recommendations, said we made speculative statements, didn't provide factual evidence, everything should be, we made a lot of assumptions, so if I can put those to bed here. Uh, like I said, there's no codes for demolition that we can find that strictly talk about this, it's hard to find anything, and, uh, there are other counties that do it, as you can see, Indian River County has a demolition approval from the Health Department, has to inspect the property for hazardous materials and toxic substances. So, other counties do it, I know it doesn't count here, but we're gonna, hopefully it appeals some sense. So, my concern is what's in the T-boxes in the area around the golf club there, the clubhouse, there's likely solvents, used oil, antifreeze, batteries, this is the type of stuff that a typical golf course would generate, these wastes, fuel, pesticides, herbicides, wastewater, that type of thing. Here's a hazardous waste generator ID search for Florida golf courses, as you can see, there's plenty of them that have ID numbers, which means they generate waste, and I didn't even search country club or golf course, that type of thing, so there are plenty. A search for the Tides Golf Course does not show that they have or do, they never have or do have a hazardous waste generator ID number. So, uh, as you can see, golf courses are hazardous waste generators, and the Tides do not have a generator ID number, and earlier today, they mentioned the Tides maybe didn't have to have one. Well, if they had 10 gallons of paint that was old and expired, how do they get rid of it? They have to have a generator ID number and get it hauled out of there, they can't just dump it in the ditch. So, only the owner of the Tides can present cradle-to-grave documentation to prove that the waste was properly disposed of. So there's two assumptions we can look at here, either they dispose of the waste properly, whichever they generated, how big or small it was, which isn't likely, because no one would pick the stuff up without a generator ID number, you have to fill out the hazardous waste manifest, or the Tides dumped it onsite or disposed of it some other way. So, I'd like the county to ask the owner to see hazardous waste manifest from the applicant for the last three years, because that's required by RECA, that they have three years of documentation. And as they said, we weren't gonna factor this in, but I think it's important, the owner of the Tides has filed a brownfield application, which says the applicant understands that certain constituents concerned may be present from the historic and customary application of pesticides. Whether it is or isn't, we don't know, apparently they're not gonna give us any test results. They won't even let us know if they took tests of the soil out there, so it's a guessing game, so it's an assumption. And if we're gonna go down to Brownfield Road, EPA rules require an environmental professional completed thorough site investigation begin in Brownfield claim, which means testing has to be done. And on their application with Pinellas County, there's a section that says, "Attached Phase One or Phase Two Environmental Reports." And apparently, those aren't there, they haven't done them, or they haven't produced them. So can the county see or request these reports, so we can see what's in the soil? So, my concerns are what's in the dirt out there, arsenic. Here's a list, just a simple Google search came up with 16 golf courses in Florida that have high levels of arsenic in the soil. And as you can see, from the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, arsenic has been the number one constituent of concern for over 20 years. And here's a safety data sheet for arsenic, toxic if swallowed, toxic if inhaled, toxic to aquatic life with long-lasting effects, avoid breathing dust, and avoid release to the environment, so arsenic is not a good actor. This is a study completed by two Florida departments that studied golf courses that had high levels of arsenic, and they found that the primary areas of contamination are T-boxes, greens, retention ponds, and maintenance areas. So we move, we demo the building, we gotta get the dirt from somewhere, if you look at the grading plan, there you go, T-box, T-box, putting green, maintenance area, that's the dirt they wanna throw in that hole after they take the building down. And we don't know if it's contaminated, because we don't see any results from anyone. Here's some EPA excavation requirements, soil samples must be taken before and during excavation, air quality testing during excavation, and if they turn over the dirt, there's, uh, site restrictions for workers, equipment cleaning, and anything going offsite. Here we get back into the codes, this is the closest one we could find relating to this, as far as air emissions, so any operation, which, down at the bottom, any operation which emits or can reasonably be expected to emit any pollutant shall obtain appropriate permit from the DEP or the county. So, again, I don't know the codes inside and out, but to me, that says if they're gonna make some dust, the DEP should be involved. So my question is, will the county collaborate with the Department of Environmental Protection to determine the appropriate permit? So, we're gonna move the dirt out here, we're talking stormwater, SWIP, and there's only one paragraph in the Pinellas County Stormwater Manual that talks about this, and it says, "Stormwater systems serving a land use or activity that produces hazardous or toxic substances." So as soon as they start turning dirt, they're producing. And the last section there says, "Such land use may not be appropriate for certain BMPs, such retention ponds, for basins, to minimize introduction of such materials." So, in other words, a silt fence isn't enough, if the soil is contaminated and it starts running offsite, that silt fence won't contain arsenic. So the county, uh, should the county require the applicant to provide BMP treatment training, which is in Chapter 6 of the Stormwater Manual outlines appropriate levels of, uh, filtering? And talking more about SWIP, the, the staff addressed this need in their, in the application, they didn't have a SWIP in it, I guess, and I didn't see one in the development plan, so will the county, uh, be provided an updated SWIP from the applicant? And if so, since they applied for brownfield, the SWIP should, uh, reflect brownfield status, which restrictions are far more than just a regular excavation. And we talked about silt fence, that they're not properly installed, there's gaps in it, so if the stormwater does run off the dirt, it'll go through the gaps, and there's a drainage system that runs under the pad and goes into the pond directly, bypassing this, the silt fence. And there you can see, there's some pictures of the drain, there's a silt fence not properly installed, it's not trenched, and the yellow line at the top left is the drain that runs under the concrete pad, under the silt fence, and directly into the pond. So, if they, if you allow the excavation to demolish the clubhouse, there will be dust, there will be dirt, and there will be stormwater runoff. So here's just a few questions I have for the county, do they have reason to believe that the soil's potentially contaminated? Until they produce results, we don't know, but the fact that they've applied for brownfields think, that it tells me they think it's contaminated. And will the county ensure oil, soil, oil, soil, air, and water are tested with DEP assistance? And lastly, is the county willing to assume shared liability for any environmental damage and health issues if they allow the demolition to proceed unchecked? So in closing, the county should uphold our appeal based on the facts provided in the applicant's brownfield application, and the best course of action is to not disturb the soil at all, in its current state, it doesn't pose any threat. Bethel Turner, my neighbor Dan.
Good afternoon, members of the board, my name is Dan Hott, I was a former operations manager at the Tides Golf Club. As Steve alluded to, uh, you know, this is really an appeal by the residents and by the community and your neighbors. Uh, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a planner, uh, we have those people, but we're saving those people for the big, and our funds, for those, for the big picture, for the zoning land use hearing, which I'm sure will be coming up. But we feel that's the first step, first dagger, to try to get this, um, zoning land use change approved. But this is truly an appeal by and for the residents of Pinellas County. Uh, if you drive down 66 Avenue North today, this is kinda what you see, as you see the date, July 14th, 2019, they have a security fence that they were issued through the county to approve, so to, they, they called it a security fence, and they never talked to the neighborhood about putting it up, and, uh, we won't get into that. Uh, this is a closer look by ABC Action News on July 14th, uh, we'll get into where the areas of concern were for the building, but it really doesn't look, besides the vegetation, vegetation, doesn't look like it's too deteriorated. This was inside the Tides Clubhouse, I took these pictures around 2017, uh, we had different parties, different functions, so doesn't look like it's in deteriorated condition. Uh, as regards to the site plan, they talk about pulling the dirt, again, from the T-boxes, and the practice greens, as you see, uh, there's a picture, and again, we feel that the best course of action is not to disturb the soil. As you look at the site plan, uh, this is your area of sight here, uh, this area was used where we stored our fertilizers and our pesticides, and you see our wash station there, and the other trash barrels, and this is, again, the pictures from the site plan walkthrough. On this side of the building, as you see the line of sight for the site plan, uh, this is our cart staging area where we washed the carts, so all the water would go down to that drain where the green arrows are, and it would go under the sil, if the county approved the permit, looking at that silt fence, you know, that's say, more power to them. Why a Type 1 application was our big question, we started this fight when they applied for the demolition permit in March of, March 20th. We started in April, asking the county questions of why can't we get a public hearing in front of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, but we figured it out, Type 1 permit application doesn't require a public hearing, a Type 2 does, and even in the county notes, fill was needed for this site, and that's in your packets and your evidence, uh, over 1,000 yards needed, uh, on their counter review, they said a Type 2 application needs to go to the Board of Adjustments for a public hearing. So we all know why they wanted to do the Type 1 application as opposed to a Type 2. And again, here, even the calculations by the county, on the county's very own notes, 84,000 cubic feet of fill, which comes out to 3,111 cubic yards. Backfill will be brought in as needed to create a gradual slope. Again, I didn't write that, we didn't write that, the residents didn't write it, the county wrote that. We argue the case of the code violation, we actually agree with the owner on this, they should not have received a minimum housing code violation. Uh, the citation, or, uh, violation was given on September 20th of 2018, for the purpose of building is in deteriorated condition with existing missing and torn screens from the patio, and then a citation was written out on November 13th. But as you look at the timeline, the county issued the housing violation on September 20th, but then the security fence permit was approved on November 1st, and then, of course, the issue's a citation on November 13th. And I asked public records request for the code violations, and why did they issue the minimum housing code violation? This is one example, was the broken window at the front door. Uh, if you notice, on, uh, September 14th, the applicant's rep attorney emailed the county asking why there was a delay in the fence permit process, and of course, on 10/28, we have a broken window, so on November 1st, the fence permit was issued. And then the patio was a second offense for the code violation. I was operations manager in 2016, 17, and I could tell you, I, we took the fence, took the screen down from that patio. The wind damage on that patio was, uh, the wind on the screen was always tearing it up, making it look like a mess, so we just took the screen completely off. So to say that that's a code violation, they should've had one in 2016 and 17 as well, because we never had the screen there. So here's your areas of concern, or the areas of the violation, the patio on the left, and this front door, again, it's beside, uh, doesn't look like it's really deteriorated, besides the vegetation part, which is another code violation. And here it is, as you look at it today, so it's properly secured with a security fence. Uh, the issue's a demolition permit, this is an email from Blake on April 12th, the issue's a demolition permit would fall under the ensure the public health, safety, and welfare. Furthermore, the demolition permit is one way in which the property owner can address the code enforcement violation regarding the vandalism that's occurred to the building. So that was in April. Well, if you notice below, Jeffrey Hills paid the code violation on May 1st, so they can't use that as a reason for the demo permit. Uh, we went to the Board of County Commissioners to voice our concerns about multiple issues on June 18th, and during that hearing, their attorney was watching our presentation, and, uh, basically emailed our county attorney and Blake and said, "I have hammered my client on mowing, and will do so again." And then the owner, which is here today, uh, in that same email chain, responded, "Everything will be perfect by the end of next week, taxes, grass, drainage ditch, et cetera, the disinformation that lies given by the Save the Tides people needs to be addressed." So I'd like to address those right now. The taxes, on June 18th is when we spoke in front of the Board of County Commissioners, and as you notice there on the right, June 21st is when those taxes were paid. On the drainage, on the right-hand side, again, bringing the issues up to our county staff, our county commissioners, the county staff is public staff, our county commissioners, the county staff, the public works departments came out now and started to take care of the drainage ditch for our neighborhood. And at the bottom there, on August 28th, we have pictures even today of the current grass situation, the county mows the easement area there that you see, but however you see the code violation, which should be there, what we would like to know is there still a code violation for the overgrown grass as of today. So I don't, I'm not quite sure if that's disinformation or lies, because end of the week of June 18th, you know, this is what, October 3rd now? To dig deeper into the tax situation, again, we understand the taxes have been paid, we understand the tax has been paid, however, the process of the inspections, the site to walk, the site plan walkthrough, and the approval of the permit was allowed during the tax delinquency, the tax lien, and the overgrown grass current code violations. So how can the county reward such bad behavior? In your packet, we included the 2014 staff, county staff recommendation from 2014, when we fought this once already, together, the park debate and the golf course constitute a measure of sustainability, so it's very easily disturbed. On page 12, the comprehensive plan, they talk about the planning to stay element, policy 1.17.2 states that Pinellas County will make decisions that do not detract from the established community identity. This clubhouse was a centerpiece for our community. And lastly, detailed engineering, on page 14, detailed engineering testing and soil profiles would need to be required to be submitted to county staff for review. Any proposal for excavation and fill would be reviewed during the site plan process. And that was, again, county staff's own words. Again, this is appealed by your neighbors, by and for the people, the Dan Millers have taken the lead for us, again, we're saving our funds for the Save the Tides group for the big fight coming up, but we all know the purpose of this demolition. Blake showed you the flood map on the top, if you walk down, go down the elevator here today, you'll see a big map, Pinellas County, and you'll see the map below, which shows the evacuation zones, and you see where the Tides clubhouse is located in the evacuation zone. And here's another GIS mapping from the county's own websites. And lastly, existing conditions, as stated by the applicant in their brownfield request, that one large existing pond is located in the northern edge of the property, near the former clubhouse, a series of smaller ponds directed via topography or through onsite ditches, pipes, and culverts to the southern ponds. Again, all the runoff was used to irrigate the golf course before it got into Boca Seega Bay. So here, it kinda shows you the drainage, so if any demolition is done in this, on this area, you see what kinda where the drainage would go, any kind of storm, again, that clubhouse area takes a lot of water, as you see in the picture on the right, you see that, how the slope goes, and you can see the damage it does to the cart path and the cement down below on that picture there. So this kinda shows you a little bit of the elevation. And lastly, again, we asked why wasn't a type 2 application needed for this process? Why couldn't we have a public hearing, which it means so much to this community? So, thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, board members, thank you for hearing us. We're a little deflated after our earlier loss, it's, we're very disappointed in the way our county is legislating against demolition. It made it very, very difficult for us to find any codes and how to help ourselves. Our commissioners are in quasi judicial, so we can't get any help from them, they can't hear us, so we're trying to come to our boards, being the first appellant to ever appeal against Pinellas County, we have learned that codes are very difficult to interpret, and they are interpreted in many different ways. What we would like to see is some common sense done to protect our community. They could have done a type 2 where they brought in the fill, they chose not to do that. They're digging up tee boxes, and they're digging up dirt that golf courses from 1972 used arsenic on. Arsenic is very dangerous to aquatic life, to wildlife, look at all the birds that live and breathe on the tides, not to mention our children, our elderly, people with compromised immune systems, we're just asking that some testing be done before you go and let somebody dig up dirt that has arsenic and brings it into the air. Just because this county has failed to legislate something on demolition of golf courses with, old golf courses with arsenic on it, doesn't mean the community and the neighborhood should be punished for that. Who is liable for that? I ask you, who is liable for that when it's already done? When things start dying? That runs through my backyard, the pond that the water, that they water over to keep the arsenic from going airborne, the water will run into this pond, this pond runs into a preserve behind my house and out into Boca Seega Bay. We're asking for common sense here. I mean, please, somebody use some common sense regarding this, what are we to do? Anyways, that's my, thank you.
Guys came in 20 seconds under, well done. Does the board have any questions for the appellants? Maybe you shouldn't sit down yet, in case the board has any questions? All right, do we have someone representing the property owner that wishes to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, board members, I'm Michael Schnaps Tyler with the law firm of Cobb Cole, 149 South Bridgewood Avenue in Daytona Beach, Florida. Here today on behalf of the property owner, Restoration Bay, have a couple things, just from a housekeeping perspective, just to enter into the record, because this is a quasi judicial hearing, if I can just provide to the clerk a copy of the permit application for the demolition and the issuance of that, that permit, the asbestos report that was prepared for the site, which includes the asbestos certificate and the abatement work that was done, and the building inspection that occurred for the property associated with the building demolition, then also a copy of the staff's report that was provided earlier, so I'll just give that to the clerk's representative and the court reporter. And just a quick point of, just clarification on our end, you know, the staff provided their assessment of the appeal that was issued with respect to the coastal construction control line and the property maintenance provisions of the code, and then the appellants came up and didn't talk about either of those issues. I want to be respectful of your time, the time and effort that they put in, and the fact that earlier this morning, we did discuss those issues regarding the habitat permit, which was focused on the removal of dirt from point A to point B, and my understanding today is that this permit is on the demolition of the structure itself, which is the clubhouse and areas. So I just wanna, just respectfully request what the pleasure of the board is with respect to, you know, the two would appear to be separate and distinct items that have been discussed before the board so far this afternoon.
Well, as we, as I tried to make you clear earlier, the scope of, the entire scope of what we're here for is, did Pinellas County comply with the county code 22-1633 and 3109-7321 of the coastal construction code when issuing the demolition permit? That's, that's the full width of our scope here. So if you want to speak to that?
Okay, but I also didn't-
Anything else you speak to, we can hear, but we can't really act upon.
Okay, absolutely, and again, I just want to be respectful of the time and effort that the appellants did put in to present some issues about the environmental aspects of the project that you may be thinking about, so we do have some experts here who can speak to that, maybe I'll just do that very, very briefly, and then we can talk about the overall appeal as well, but I did forget to give this to the clerk, so. So first, I would like to ask Jacob Sisco to come up, he's with the demolition contractor. Could you please state your name for the record?
Jacob Sisco.
And Mr. Sisco, where do you work?
Sonny Glassbrenner.
And what do you do for Sonny Glassbrenner?
I'm a senior estimator for Sonny Glassbrenner Demolition.
Okay, and what was Sonny Glassbrenner's role with respect to the application that's been filed here so far?
We filed for the permits, and we filed for the permits and submitted them.
Okay, and did that include preparing the plans that were with it, and filling out the applications, and meeting with the staff?
Yes, we prepared the site plan and made sure the utility disconnects were completed, and filled out the application for the demo permit.
Okay, and did you go through any inspections with county staff after all that work was completed as well?
We had to install erosion control, and then Pinellas County inspected it and signed off on that.
And can you describe the process involved for the actual demolition of the building structure?
It's a fairly easy, simplistic demolition, it's your basic technically two-story building, so we would just demolish the building from top to bottom, including water, dust control, things like that, to make sure nothing gets airborne during our operation.
Okay, and with respect to the material that is a result of that demolition, where does that material go when, when you're done with the actual tear down of the building?
All of that material goes to a licensed land, local landfill.
Okay, and is that a, let's call it a construction and debris land for C and D?
C and D, class 3 landfill, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, and, and what measures are in place during the actual demo work itself to ensure that there isn't any inadvertent release of what was referred to as substances or contaminants?
Well, if there's any kind of substances, substances that are noticed by our personnel, they immediately stop work, we contact the owner, we investigate what that substance could be, and if there's found hazardous in any fashion, then we contain and, and remove and dispose of it properly.
So you, you all follow the proper local, state, and federal rules for that, that type of activity?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, and, and how long has your company that you work for been in business?
59 years.
Okay, and, and on average, how many demolitions per year have you all worked on?
Anywhere from 50 to 100.
Okay, and in your opinion, you know, how would you describe the scope of this demolition of this clubhouse?
It's a fairly simple, small-scale demolition compared to what we're used to.
And approximately, how big is the building that's, that's been taken down?
Approximately 6,000 square foot.
Okay, and, and what's your estimated time from start to finish completing all the work associated with this project?
One to two weeks, and we'll be gone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And just one other person I'd like to bring up is Jim Oliveras, he's an environmental consultant.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Oliveras, I work for SCS Engineers.
Okay, and Mr. Oliveras, what do you do for SCS Engineers?
I'm a project director, and I'm head of the environmental services group for the southeast.
And how long have you been in the environmental field?
I've been old now, 33 years.
Okay, and what licenses and certifications do you hold?
I'm a registered professional geologist in Florida and in Georgia.
And I understand you consult with respect to environmental issues on properties, is that correct?
Yes, I do, you know, assessment, I do waste management, waste characterization, waste disposal, consulting, things like that.
Okay, and have you worked on projects where buildings have been demolished before?
Yes.
Okay, and have you worked on redevelopment of golf courses?
Yes, quite a few.
Okay. With respect to a building itself, how is the fact that there is impervious surface relevant from an environmental perspective?
Well, if you have, if you have any kind of chemical storage in the building, I mean, it's, if something were to happen and a container spilled, then you would, you know, the concrete floor would protect against it getting into the soil.
So it serves as a barrier?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and in your experience, do, do most property owners do inspections before demolition to make sure that, that any materials that are in the building that could be a contaminant have been removed?
Yes.
Okay, and it's your understanding that, that that's being done here for this project as well?
That's right.
Okay. The, appellants have brought up the brownfield area designation, in your experience, what does a, a state of Florida brownfield area designation mean?
Well, it's an area that's designated by local government, it's usually designated as a brownfield because they know there have been maybe industrial use, and it is, provides financial incentive for people to come in and clean up sites that are contaminated and redevelop them.
So a brownfield area designation is essentially a message that they want to target state incentives for a specific property?
That's right.
Okay, does that mean that the property is actually contaminated?
No, it doesn't. Brownfield areas are, you know, fairly large, and there's properties within that area that are probably clean.
Okay, and actually, earlier today, the, earlier hearing, I showed you a figure that actually showed a large brownfield area designated by the county, correct?
Yes.
And do you remember off the top of your head how many acres that was?
It was about 2,100 acres.
So over, so the county is actually designated over 2,000-acre brownfield area?
Right.
And, and in your opinion, does, does that mean that every single one of those 2,100 acres is contaminated?
No.
Okay.
Very unlikely.
It, it means that the state wants to, or the county wants to target incentives at that property?
Right.
So it's, it's, it's got an economic development purpose?
Yes, and I mean, what, what, some of the discussion earlier about brownfields, I think there's a misunderstanding, the brownfields program doesn't add any burden on the, the property owner to do additional sampling or testing or anything, and it doesn't remove additional testing or anything, that, the brownfields program is simply an incentive program to get tax credits for part of the money that you spend to redevelop the property if it's spent clean contamination up. So just because it's a brownfields site doesn't mean there's, action has to be taken at that point.
Okay, but, but when you actually formally enter into the brownfield program, you have to do testing, correct?
Oh yeah, yeah, and when you enter in the brownfield program, you are, you have to do testing, first of all, if you want to, if you want to get any reimbursement, but the testing isn't required until there's a change in land use, when the potential contaminants are from the legal use of pesticides, for example. So, you know, golf courses, yes, some, many golf courses have contamination, and that's, and property owners know that going in, so the, the development work, once, once this site use changes, then the DEP can say, okay, now you're subject to having to do testing.
So taking a step back, is the trigger for the actual testing that was described, the county designation of the brownfield area, or actually entering into the brownfield program by signing the agreement with the state?
The pro, entering into the program.
Okay, so that will happen at a later date?
Right.
Okay, got it. I did enter the asbestos report into the record, did you review that prior to today?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and did your company prepare that report, or did it a different company?
No, it was a different company.
Okay, and to the, to the best of your knowledge, did that report, you know, represent a thorough and accurate and proper asbestos report?
Well, there are actually two reports, first was sampling, testing all the different suspected asbestos materials, they identified, I believe, there were four different types of materials that contained asbestos, and they went in and actually removed all of that asbestos-containing materials, and that was the second report, was reporting of removal.
And there's a, there's a certificate noting that that work had been complete?
Yeah, and that they had the proper licensing to do it.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. So again, just, just taking a step back, I know your, your appeal is very limited to the issues that have been raised by the appellant in their actual submittal, you've heard some, some statements about some, some different issues, but I hope, you know, this information that we provided have helped provided you all with assurances that, that both issues have been addressed, that from your staff's perspective, you know, the coastal construction doesn't comply to this specific property, the property maintenance issues are addressed by the demolition that is proposed to occur, and that the environmental issues are something that we're taking into account, that we're working on, and that we followed all the proper procedures with respect to asbestos and those issues to be able to accomplish the work that's, that's going to happen if this demolition is allowed to move forward. We're happy to answer any questions that, that you all may have, and appreciate your time today, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the board members? No questions? All right, so, thank you. Shut my timer off. So as I, as I alluded to in the outline of today's proceedings, we'll move into rebuttals, but I would like to remind everyone that the rebuttal, the scope, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, public comments, my bad. So, we're gonna hear now from the people who have wished to, wished to speak and who filled out a blue card. Let me remind everybody that we're trying to keep the focus of what you have to say on what we are here today to decide on, and again, that is, did Pinellas County comply with those two codes when issuing the demolition permit? So I will call up people, I have a card here from Jacob something or other, Sugarloaf Key?
No, that's me.
Okay, we've already heard from you. Bob Guyer?
Good afternoon, thank you for your time, my name's Bob Guyer, I live at 1162367th Avenue in Seminole, and I'm recently retired after 23 years as the elected county engineer of Green County, Ohio. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Ohio, I'm a licensed land surveyor, and like I said, I spent 23 years as a county engineer, and before that, I- said, I spent 23 years as a county engineer, and before that, I spent 25 years in road and bridge construction. I think, you know, when one looks at what all was going on here, sometimes we have a tendency to read things and, and, you know, we understand that the law says one thing and we understand that ordinance say something else, but I think, I think in this matter, if we look at the total picture of what's going on here, we need to use some common sense also. I don't know if that applies at this board, or any board at the county, or people I've talked to, but I think whenever I looked at a decision as an elected official, I always tried to bring common sense into the issue, because everybody has a way of reading things, and it's not always the same. So I guess my questions, I have questions about this that nobody's ever really answered, I wonder, what was the big rush to put up the fence, and what's the big rush to tear down this clubhouse? Because if one looks at the code, in Section 13456, it defines the start of development as the grading of the property, which is a major part of this matter that we're discussing here today. So technically, by him tearing down this clubhouse and then using these T-boxes and regrading this area by not bringing in fill, he's technically started the development, which we all know is the ultimate goal of this particular person. They want to develop this property into houses, and this is the beginning. And that's a point that I can't seem to get anyone at the county, or anyone, to agree with. They say, well, yeah, you can use that argument, but in this case, this is a golf course or a park, and they have a right to come in and maintain their property. My question is, why are we tearing down a perfectly good structure for a cracked window and missing screen on a porch? Why are we doing this? I mean, isn't it a lot cheaper to fix the window or put a board over it and put boards up over the doors and windows rather than tear down the structure because we're concerned about vandals, we're concerned about things that might happen to our building? Let's make the building more secure. He's already started by putting up a fence, and he couldn't just put up a fence, he had to put up a fence with a screen on it so nobody could see what's on the other side, which is grass about this high right now because it's never been mowed. This is just another step to further infuriate and try to cause problems with the people in the neighborhood, and we're not going to allow it. Now, we just want, one last matter here. I ask all of you sitting here to just say, you know, if we look back on this matter down the road, we can say, did we go into it with our eyes wide open, or were we looking into the sun? And I thank you for your time.
Peter A. something or other of Gulfport?
I'm here on a different matter.
You're here on a different matter?
Yes, we don't have anything to do with that, we wanted to address the board on public comment time.
This would be it, I think, but Jason, I'll defer to you.
It's not relevant.
So it's not relevant to this appeal, at all?
It's not relevant to this appeal, but it said, public comment, you sent us here from the last PCCLE meeting, so that's why we came here.
Yeah, I think you may be mistaken, I do recognize you guys from our last meeting, but I don't think this is the appropriate forum for what you're here to speak about.
On the agenda, there is a Section 5 after the hearing for citizens to be heard for matters not on the agenda.
Okay.
That's why we, that's why we came.
All right. I guess we can, we can give you your three minutes, it's just three minutes. Excuse me.
Is it too late for me to give you a call?
I'll allow it, because I think this is the last one. Does no one else want to speak? Please state your name.
My name is Deborah Janicki, and I'm a resident of the O'Kerr Shores, which is the backside of the tides, and I just, I mean, you have to speak to me as if I'm for. I do have somewhat semi-intelligence, but I'm just confused by something that was stated repeatedly. You have addressed and reemphasized that this was to, this hearing was to address specific codes in relationship to the demolition permit that was provided by the county. And I understood that that demolition was granted because the owners of the property failed to maintain the property, being that there was a front door broken, and that there was screen missing from a side porch, and that the landscaping had not been maintained. Am I correct on that? Did I hear that correctly?
I can't speak to that, but he'll address it during rebuttals.
So, I guess I'm kind of restating what the man stated earlier. So because they failed to maintain the property, as I must do as a county resident, such as keeping my grass cut, which is the major offense, because that has not been done even to date, okay? They tear down the building, and then what happened to the landscaping? Then they start maintaining the landscaping? I don't understand the process of tearing down a building from a broken door, and side screens missing, and grass that's been unkept, not only for the front of that building, for the entire property. So that's where I'm just kind of confused, and I say, speak to as if I'm for, so that I totally understand this, because as a resident of this county, I also have a responsibility to maintain my property and not just tear it down for those kind of small, miniscule infractions of the code. Thank you.
So last chance for anyone who wants to speak on this specific matter. So hearing none, we will now move into rebuttals, which I tried to jump to earlier. So we'll start back with you, Blake, for the county.
So I'll speak to the last comment that you heard, and then David will speak to some additional matters. I want to be clear, the county's process for which we go under the code enforcement is complaint-based and complaint-driven. So somebody from the community called the county and asked us to address the building maintenance issues on that property. And so we go out and we evaluate that through the code enforcement process, and we identify those areas that are substandard. The screen's missing, the window's broken, so on and so forth. At that point, we provide the property owner with a notice of violation. They have the opportunity then to pay that fine, or they can contest it and go to the local ordinance violation court and plead their case to the judge. Payment of the fine does not necessarily bring the property back into compliance, if the property stays out of compliance, we can go back yet again, and we can go through escalated. In addressing those violations, the property owner has the opportunity to fix the violation or remove the violation. It is at their discretion, under Florida's property rights, they can apply to take the building down, just the same way they applied, the owner applied at the time in 1973 to build the building. One does not necessarily relate to the other. It's not that they're required to tear down the building because they have a broken window, that's their prerogative. That's one way to address it, is to remove the building in its entirety, but they could absolutely fix that window and maintain the building. That would also abate or address the violation. It's the property owner's prerogative to take that building down, it's within their private property rights to do so, as long as they go through the proper codes and ordinances in which... So I'll stop my comments there, and I'll let David respond.
David Sinowski, Assistant County Attorney. Again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but there were two bases that this appeal was brought to you. One was under the Coastal Construction Code, and the other one was under the Commercial Business Industrial Minimum Standards Code. The county proffered evidence as to how both those codes are inapplicable to the current situation, and the appellants have not proffered any evidence at all. In fact, they didn't address either matter at all. There was no, either, there's no testimony or no evidence that was brought before you how either of these codes apply. So at this point, again, we think that the basis of the appeal is inapplicable, there's no cause of action that's, you know, failure to state a cause of action, lack of jurisdiction, all these matters of this board, and that you should deny the appeal based on those bases. Is there any questions I can answer, and again?
Rebuttal from the owner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very briefly, again, Michael Schnaps Tyler with Cobb Cole, just taking a step back to a couple of things that were said during public comment, you know, I mentioned the building was 6,000 square feet, if you take that into, convert that to acres, you're talking about 0.138 acres on a 150-acre property. So it is a relatively small project relative to the rest of the site. I think, you know, staff, you know, set the issue really well with respect to what an owner can and can't do with their property. They have a right to apply to demolish a building, and if they follow the code requirements, that is granted by the county and the staff, and the appellants are well within their right to appeal that decision, and then that's why we're here today on a quasi-judicial determination where you all are effectively the judge, where you apply the code, the law that applies, and the facts that have presented before you. My understanding is there is a maintenance agreement with the county for upkeep of the grass and things, and the property owner has been complying with that throughout this process. And you did hear county staff talk to the complaint-driven code enforcement, there have been a lot of complaints. I can't speak to how many, maybe Blake can, if you ask him, but this isn't just a random, you know, broken window here, or a screen there. My understanding is it's significant, and it's significant enough that warrants, you know, taking down the building. And so we just respectfully request that you support your staff's recommendation, and again, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Dana Millers, or do you have more to say?
Can we cross-examine some of the experts?
Sure.
Thank you. Could I call the contractor, Mr. Cisco? You state your name for the record again, please?
Jacob Cisco.
And you said you filed for the permits?
Our company filed for the permits, yes.
And you, you were not there for the site plan walkthrough with the county?
I created the site plan from the survey.
Did you discuss the Type 1 versus Type 2 application process with the county?
No.
Who made the determination to use the T-box area and the practice green as the fill instead of bringing fill in?
Just for the record, I'm going to object that the scope of the cross-examination needs to be on the basis of his testimony. I don't think he testified as to, you know, any of those issues. It was about the building itself and how that demolition works.
He testified that he did the application for the demo permit, so...
Okay, keep going, and we'll see if you, don't go out of bounds any further. Fair enough?
Fair enough. And so you did not meet with any of the county officials as far as a Type 1 or Type 2 application?
I did not meet with anybody, no.
So everything was done over the counter with our county officials?
Everything was done in accordance of how it was supposed to be done, there was never any scheduled mandatory meetings with anybody.
Okay, and you said you've done many demos before?
I've done hundreds of demolitions.
Typically, commercial or residential?
Everything, I do industrial, commercial, residential, then power plants.
What percentage residential?
20%, maybe.
20%, so that would, for not a 6,000-square-foot building, but an 8,400-square-foot building, this probably would be a small demo for you, since you do...
This is a smaller-scale demolition.
Thank you, thank you for that, that's all I have, thank you very much.
How many demolitions in the brownfield sites have you done?
I couldn't tell you many, I've done Bethlehem Steel, Kodak Park, many power plants, different. I don't know, I don't know if they were designated as brownfields or not, I was an estimate on those projects.
You wouldn't want to know going into it if you were dealing with something toxic?
If I was...
Objection, you know, he's not a corporate representative of his company.
I tend to agree.
Okay. All right, and then I want to ask a news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could we call the environmental expert up?
Absolutely.
Could you state your name again for the record?
Jim Oliveras, SCS Engineers.
Thank you. Does the application for entering into a brownfield status, does that start the process for a brownfield application?
Object to that as well, that application is not here as the one that you...
It's actually submitted in the evidence that the board has in front of them.
And it was talked about, the brownfield was talked about.
Yeah, I'm just saying the specific application itself for the designation is a separate issue from today.
It is a separate issue, but I think he did speak to it during your presentation. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody appear?
And then I'll, I'll at least state for the record that I prepared the brownfield area application, so, thank you.
Okay.
But does, the question for the expert, does an application for a brownfield enter, start the process for the brownfield situation, brownfield status?
What process?
The process, the brownfield process. You mentioned in your testimony that when the brownfield process started, in other words, that's when the testing has to be completed. So does an application submitted to the county, does that start the brownfield application, brownfield process?
Well, I'm not trying to be evasive, but that's vague, I mean, you don't have to do the testing of any kind when you submit the application. You're getting the site qualified for the brownfields program in the event that you find contamination and you have to spend money to clean it up, and then you're eligible to submit that, those costs for tax credits.
But what I'm trying to get at is, when does the, you mentioned when the brownfield app, the brownfield process starts, does that start when the application is submitted to the county, or to the federal state?
It isn't a process. I mean, the brownfields program is an incentive program to get financial assistance for cleaning up contaminated sites. What governs the cleanup, and what tells you what you have to do to do the cleanup is a DEP rule, and that DEP rule does not become effective until you change the land use.
Correct, right, but I'm just trying, again, the point, when does the brownfield process start? So when does the testing for the soil have to begin?
That's not governed by the brownfields program, that's governed by the Chapter 62780, which is the DEP's rule, okay? So that's what determines if you have to do testing. If you have to do testing, then you're eligible for reimbursement in the brownfields program.
So in an application, would you say possibly that could be contaminated soils due to pesticides within your own application?
Again, I'm going to...
Yeah, and I agree, I agree with that.
Understood, understood. Do you know if the area that we've discussed today, the 110 and practice green areas, is contaminated or not?
Do not know.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Have you worked on any brownfield projects?
Come to the microphone, please, stop.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Have you worked on any brownfield projects that didn't have any environmental tests going into it?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't find that unusual?
No.
Okay.
In fact, people often, they often get into the brownfields program as a benefit to the property.
Do they do it before they buy the property, no one are going to go brownfield?
They can't do it before they buy the property. So often, people will buy the property, they'll find out about the brownfields incentive program, they'll get in the program before any testing's done, and then if they have a problem, they can submit.
So they're claiming innocent landowners, what that sounds like?
No, no, that's a different issue altogether.
Do you think the owner of this course should have checked before they bought it?
I agree, you don't have to answer that. Let me encourage you to kind of stick to the basis of your own appeal?
Okay.
Which you've really strayed from that.
Do you have any experience with arsenic on golf courses?
Yes.
Could you tell me the last one?
I'm currently working on three projects in South Florida and one in Northeast Florida, and are they, what are you finding out, are they above threshold limits?
I don't think that's pertinent here, I really don't.
Okay, well, I just want to see if he's doing it currently.
I understand, I understand, but you got, I really like you to stick to the basis of your appeal, which I've tried to reinforce on numerous times, and no one seems to want to address it from your side.
Okay.
It's your appeal, it's the basis of your appeal, okay?
Soon as we get through some testimony.
I got you, I got you.
Thank you very much for your time, thank you. Could I call Blake up? Blake, you mentioned that there's complaint-based code violations for the broken window, and the screen was missing. How many of those do you approximately have?
On this property, or?
On this property, on this property.
I'd have to go back and look, but it's several, it's not, it's not in an inordinate amount.
Do you know how many from the owner?
How many complaints ever seen?
Complaints from the owner?
The owner wouldn't complain about his own property.
Okay, just checking. That's all. One more question, is there a current code violation right now on the property for overgrown grass?
I'd have to worry about that, I don't know.
Thank you.
I have some questions for Blake.
Go ahead.
You mentioned that the...
Can you just come a little closer to that microphone so we can all hear you?
You mentioned that the county entered into a maintenance agreement with the applicant.
Correct.
Do you feel the applicant has lived up to that maintenance agreement?
Again...
Again, I guess I would like to object. Again, this is nothing to do with the coastal construction line, but, you know. It has nothing to do with, with what we're here before.
I, I have one question.
Go ahead.
Um, for, for county legal. Is it a prerequisite to approve the demo permit that they have to have a code enforcement violation? Or can the owner just select the demo of the building without any violations?
The owner has the right to demolish the building without any violations.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's the basis for the objection.
Do you guys approve permits? Does, do you, you guys approve permits for putting up a building if somebody has code violations?
If that code violation is corrected by those building permits, they can do that certainly.
Before they get a permit, they have to correct the code violations.
There are times when the building permit is the correction for the code violation.
But in general, if somebody wants to put up a building and they're in violation of several codes, do you give them the permit to go ahead and put up the building without taking care of the current code violations?
You have to be more specific, cause there's code violations that can be done in a number of different ways. And sometimes those code violations can be addressed by somebody obtaining a building permit. And others, but talking in generalities is, is difficult at best because I, I don't know what you're-
And, and I, I, let's stay away from the hypotheticals and try to stick to-
Well, this is not hypothetical. I-
No, it certainly was. What you just asked was hypothetical.
The county entered into a maintenance agreement. The maintenance agreement was failed on. I went before the county board of commissioners. The county had to take back the water easement. And they are now in a project to correct that because the applicant did not correct the drainage.
But that doesn't relate to the building that's being demolished.
Okay, when the building's demolished, they have to use water to contain dust. Where does that water go? The water goes into the pond. The pond goes behind, behind my house.
Let me call a timeout here. We're trying to focus on these two things that I keep going back to. You filed an appeal based on two items. You keep telling me you're coming back to it, but I don't hear any questions relating to it. So I just wanna kinda, like I said, I'm referee here. I'm just trying to steer you in the right direction. You filed an appeal. You need to speak to, speak to that, cause that's all we can, that's all we can act upon. That is the full limit of our scope here today, our, our abilities. So I would encourage you to, to, to get on task.
Are there any codes that strictly apply to demolition?
There's the Florida Building Code, and that's what we're here to discuss.
That strictly apply to demolition?
There's not a specific demolition code. It's assumed within the Florida Building Code.
There is our problem. As, as everyday people, we're trying to find codes to come before our boards with our issues regarding hazardous waste that could be possibly contaminating our homes. There's no specific code. And you keep telling me to come back to the code. We looked, we tried. Where's the common sense? Just because Pinellas County has failed to legislate does not make it right.
I appreciate your concerns and, and your concerns are valid. I'm not trying to invalidate your concerns and your, and your, you know, this, this is where you live and I get it. But you have to also appreciate our limited scope here. Now, there are other forums possibly for these other concerns that you have. And I'm, and I'm, I, I get it. But you just have to appreciate what we're here and what our capabilities are.
What do you think your liabilities are if my pet gets sick because there's arsenic being tracked out? What if, what if all these birds die? All these birds die?
I would have to defer to our counsel.
Who is gonna be responsible? Counselor, who's gonna be responsible without all these codes? If there is no testing and arsenic is on the property, who is gonna be responsible? Are you taking liability for that because you are not thinking about, uh, the brownfield that was filed after the permit? Who's gonna take responsibility?
I-
Again, now to address the codes, actually why we're here, the building code and the coastal code. As you see, there's a lot of passion for this.
I get it.
We're residents. That's part of the appeal process for us as residents to come to you in front of the board, who we feel are the experts. I mean, you all know the code much better than I, much better than most of the people sitting here today. And that's part of the process of how we did it without an attorney, without a planner, without experts. We're saving all those for the big picture, which we know that fight's coming too, sooner than later. We're coming here with, you know, the best we can with the minimum amount of time that we had when we found out the demolition permit was approved. We had a certain timeline to get stuff in. So we scrambled as a residence group and tried to figure out what we can appeal in this process. And, and as you know, the building code book is pretty large. And to find something specifically or to go through whatever, we just, we picked one, you know, that we thought, that we interpreted as a case for this appeal. So again, we're pleading to you, the coastal code, same thing. We found something in there, we just threw it in there, you know, and, and I'm gonna throw you under the bus. You know, we had a call after we submitted the appeal, where did you find that code? From Mr. Sadowski's person, uh, somebody called us, cause he couldn't find the code. And I had to explain that it was on the county's very own website. I mean, I've got witness testimony to that. They didn't know where the code for the coastal code was. And we had to research. Again, it's confusing to them, the attorneys, county attorneys, it's confusing to us. So to sit here and say, you know, to find the exact code to stop a demo, we don't feel is right. And that's why we bring our concerns to you, five or six of you that are the experts here, and hopefully you rule in our favor. Cause as you can see, there's many people here in the seats today, and there are many more at home that couldn't make it because of work schedule. And, uh, you know, we're, we're saving for the big fight, but we know this is the first battle of the big fight. So we hope we have your support in this process. So to, back to the building code, I'm sure there's something in there for code violations. If you have a code violation for grass, or you have a code violation for, for whatever, that you should not be granted a demolition permit or any permit for that matter, if you have current code violations. If you're saying that's to answer your code violation, I just proved the timeline. They had a security fence to block the property off before they got the citation. And the citation was paid for. And there's no current violation for that building, for that missing, missing, uh, minimum housing as of today. So it makes no sense. So we again ask for common sense. We, we hope and pray that you side in the favor of your neighbors and your residents. Uh, we would ask the owner, we're not, again, fighting him here today, we're fighting the county's decision. You know, but we would ask the owner to do the same thing. Why not? You submitted a zoning land use case, why not wait until that's over before you actually do the demo? To see if you can get the zoning land use changed. Do that first. Be a good neighbor. We doubt we get, we, we very highly doubt we get this. That's why we're here today. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. So, um, now we move into the deliberation phase.
You have to declare the public hearing closed.
Okay, I'm being told that I need to declare the public hearing portion of this closed. So be it. Now we can start deliberations. And, um, just to reiterate.
Can I give up just, just a few statements before we begin?
Please do, yes. Please help me.
The deliberation. As I opened up, um, earlier today, our main focus here today is for us to decide, did Pinellas County comply with Pinellas County Code 22-163 and 3109-7321 of the Coastal Construction Code when issuing the demolition permit? CB 19, z, dash, 02578. Now that I've stated that, I have reviewed the special act. And within the special act, it, it states, um, upon a determination that said board has jurisdiction, the appeal shall be considered by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for the Florida Building Code. One of the things that were listed within the applicant, uh, the applicant's, um, documents that were provided to us was a Pinellas County Code. So you must determine, is that Pinellas County Code applicable based off of what I just stated to you as it relates to, um, the special act? And dealing with the Pinellas County Code, the other code that was listed was a Coastal Construction Code. And it is up to the applicant to bear the burden as it relates to this appeal. They have to provide competent substantial evidence in order to prove their particular case that is before us today. And competent substantial evidence is defined as such relevant evidence as a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. Competent evidence must be credible, factually based, must amount to more than bare allegations, and must support a reasonable foundation for the conclusions reached. So I just wanted to give y'all that before you begin to deliberate, to think about the testimonies that you've heard from all parties, all three parties here today. Uh, was it competent? Was it substantial? Were the codes that provided applicable for you to be making decisions on and use that as your guide?
Board members? Any comments, questions, discussion?
I'd like to address the Coastal Construction Code issue first. As far as I know, the Coastal Construction Code is a local adopted technical amendment to the Florida Building Code for the county. But I do agree with, um, county legal that in this particular hearing for the demolition permit, uh, the building was built prior to the establishment of the Coastal Construction Control Line in 1979. And it also meets the other exception where it's over 5,000 feet from the actual Coastal Construction Control Line. So both option, or both criteria, um, that code section does not apply, in my opinion.
You know, as a practicing engineer, I deal with this Coastal Construction Code every day. And I, Donna, agree, I don't think it applies either. It's technically the Pinellas Gulf Beaches Coastal Construction Code. And, you know, for the reasons stated, I don't believe that applies.
Does anyone want to address the other code that was referenced? Commercial Business and Industrial Minimum Standards Code? And its applicability?
I, I don't feel that it's, it applies only because if they were maintaining, keeping the building, that'd be one, one thing. But with the application, that takes that, I believe, out of the realm of discussion for that.
Actually, I think that, that's a county ordinance and it's not a local amendment to the code. Either the administrative section or the technical section, I don't think this board has regulatory authority on that section of the appeal.
So in other words, that's not part of the Florida Building Code?
Correct.
And as such, we're, we're limited to ruling on issues of the Florida Building Code?
So as, as, I'm not part of this process or I can't participate. If, if we wanna go further, we're gonna need some kind of a motion from somebody that, um, takes some action.
I'll make a motion that based on the Florida Building Code and the testimony that we've heard that there wasn't enough evidence to show that this building, this demolition permit was issued in, in violation of the Florida Building Code.
I second.
Jason, do we need some language in there that we are upholding the issuance of it or rejecting the?
Yes.
Heal of it?
Yes.
One or the other?
Yes.
So if you'd like to maybe amend your, um, motion just to include something to that effect?
I'll try to amend that.
Okay.
My motion, uh, I amend that to include that the appeal should be denied.
I second.
Any discussion? No discussion, um, we will take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It was unanimous, five, five, uh, five in favor, zero against. The motion carries, the motion passes. Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that's-
I, I think Mr. Sadowski can, can speak with you about that.
So shall we let, uh, let this die down a little bit before we continue on with our board meeting that we're, that more citizens to be heard? I'm not sure you need to stay, but I, you're certainly welcome to. Why don't we give them a minute or two to file out so we can get some peace and quiet and, um- All right, so, so finally, um, per our agenda, we did have a section at the end for citizens to be heard. And I see two familiar faces in the crowd. Would you wanna come up together or separately?
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Jaseu. I'm a lead inspector.
We're holding you to your three minutes.
Which is, yeah.
Starting right now.
Which is, yeah, Peter Jaseu, uh, lead inspector. And I would ask for your indulgence and be allowed to yield my time to my colleague, Tom Rogers.
All right.
Please, thank you.
My name's Tom Rogers. I am a EPA certified risk assessor and lead based paint inspector. I have been for about 10 years now. I'm on a bit of a mission in Pinellas County as well as all other counties and municipalities in the state of Florida right now. It is, uh, I can go into a municipality as a licensed contractor and pull a building permit to renovate a house built before 1978, whether or not I am RRP certified. If I do that, I'm a violation of federal law. So our opinion is that I'm not certified to do it. And I think that's a violation of law. I don't think that building inspectors, uh, building officials should be issuing permits on houses built before 1978 unless the applicant produces his RRP certification and show that he's taken a one eight hour course and been certified and his firm is certified. And, um, or that he's had a lead based paint inspection done by a lead based paint professional and there's no lead based paint hazard. So as far as I'm concerned, he's not certified. What we're trying to do is have that amended and have an amendment done to the, um, to the, to the Florida Building Code by PCCLB. The PCCLB enabling, enabling legislation lets that happen. It says specifically, the board may adopt amendments to the code that are necessary as a condition precedent to any federal or state sponsored program and governing body of any municipality. So the board, the board can make the change of PCCLB. I'm here because I was at the PCCLB and it was uncertain where I had to go, so it's kind of out of frustration that I'm here. It was just pointed out to me that there is a provision in the, in the, in the statute that says, um, in section 32, that any appeal which may be brought, um, before either Board of Adjustment and Appeals for the Florida Building, for the Florida Building Code or the Board of Adjustment Appeals for Life Safety shall be referred to the latter, meaning life safety. I don't have an appeal. So there's another provision there that says a Board of Adjustment, a Board of Adjustment Appeals for the Florida Building Code provisions now falling within the jurisdiction of the boards created by subsection A and B, which are the other boards, mechanical plumbing, et cetera. Which is my situation, I believe. I believe that the PCCLB should entertain an, an application for an amendment that will then come before this board. This board then will make a recommendation to the PCCLB pursuant to the, the terms of the, of the statute and, uh, change or not change the code. It's still our position that whether you change, if you don't change it, that every contractor that pulls a permit on a house built before 1978 is a violation of the law and therefore not certified. He's, he's unlicensed. And the municipalities or the county in an unincorporated area having issued that permit and the resulting, uh, impact on a young child, that county and that municipality, I think, is an enabler and as a consequence liable. So I think, and all I'm really trying to do is, PCCLB is the only avenue I have in Florida. And this is the only county that has a PCC, has such a board. So this is our opportunity and that's why we started here.
All right.
Okay.
I just wanna let you know that we're not the only such board.
Ah, that's great.
There are multiple, um, contractors licensing boards around the state.
We're still gonna start with you.
Understood.
We're, we're residents of Pinellas County. And it, it matters to us. We've been here 22 years. Please, go ahead.
What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, um, is that we consult with our attorney and figure out what might be the appropriate avenue for you.
That's, that's what I'm-
I understand what you're saying and, and it's not inappropriate for you to cite it. We just have to figure out what's possible for us to do.
That's my frustration. That's all I've really been trying to do now is find out, where do we go? Where do we go to try and make- Where do we go to try and make people understand that this needs to be amended?
I understand, and if I can spend some time with our attorney, then I would be happy to get back with you.
I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Let me give you my card so you can reach me.
Thanks. I think I did a few charges, I think Friday.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think that concludes our business here today. Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating, and we will consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.